Okay, we're gonna begin tonight. We're gonna open our call or meeting to order on this April 2nd, 2018 at Johnny Appleseed Fair. I mean, Appleseed Fair. To my mind, it's Appleseed School. It looks very festive here, I think is what it is. So we're gonna all rise and say they pledge allegiance. And I believe we have a student who's going to lead us. Correct? Students. Yep, come right up to the microphone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, gentlemen. Thank you. You know what, could they say their names so the audience will know who they are?
I'm Jack.
I'm Mark.
And what grade are you guys in?
We're in 4th grade.
Awesome job. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice job. Okay, I'm gonna read our statement and then hold up the meeting. The committee represents the needs of all Leinster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leinster. Okay, with that, we're gonna open up our public forum. If anybody would like to address us, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Would anybody like to address the school committee tonight? Please come forward. And one last time, if anybody would like to address us in public forum, please come forward. All right, having no one coming forward, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting and we're gonna move on to communications superintendent.
There are no communications this evening.
Thank you. And we're gonna move into your superintendent's report, please.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to state it was so nice driving over here with the sunshine because when I woke up this morning and I saw the snow, we're done. That's it. We're done. So tonight, there's a few things that I just want to put on the forefront for our district. And I first want to celebrate today was Autism Awareness Day. And students from Samosad came down to City Hall to help the mayor light City Hall in blue. And they took a tour around the city, went to the fire department, the health department, visited us at Central Office. I think the pizza was the biggest hit. That's fine. But it was nice to have students come down and really just celebrate and put that out there in the forefront. First and foremost, kindergarten registration is this Saturday. This is a very important day. From 8:30 to 1 o'clock at Northwest, you need to make sure that you have all your proper documentation, whether you're a returning family or new family to Leinster Public Schools. Please come prepared. This is a really exciting time for families, but it can be a very anxious time. And making sure that you have all the correct documentation will help. We have a team in force to help families move forward. So we look forward to seeing all of our cave registrations for Leinster residents. During this event, we also will be kicking off our literacy initiative called Footsteps to Brilliance. We are part of an innovation zone with nine other cities. Every child in the city of Leinster has a free app to a reading program, birth to at least grade three. We will be having a city campaign giving this app to all our children in Leinster and surrounding districts. And so Saturday, we will begin to kick that off with the public library, City Hall. You'll start hearing about it, so please take advantage of that.
Superintendent, can I just ask a quick question about the kindergarten registration?
Yes.
For proper documentation? Do we know where to find that list?
Yes, it's posted on our website. We've put out flyers. We have some flyers here this evening. If anybody is still in, not sure what they need, call us down at Central Office. We'll make sure you have it. We don't want anybody to waste any efforts. Bring what you need so that we can roll this process out seamlessly for every family.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just want to make sure that everybody has another reminder that May 2nd and June 6th in the city of Leinster have switched. May 2nd is a half-day of school for students. There is professional development in the afternoon. And June 6th is a full day. We needed to give time to our high school students for state testing. So May 2nd is a half-day, June 6th is a full day. With that being said, through my notice last Sunday, and I hope everybody's receiving those on Sunday mornings, we are beginning state testing tomorrow. ELA testing. It's really important that students are here on time, well-rested, fed, and encouraged. Together, we need to encourage our students to really demonstrate where they're at, what they've learned, and we need to be proud of their efforts because I'm pretty sure that they're gonna show us their achievement. Also, we have been celebrating some exemplary staff and community members over the past few weeks. We have another opportunity to do so on April 11th. The Rotary Dinner at Doubletree is honoring three more exemplary teachers, one from every level. If you would like to be a part of this, to buy a ticket, show your support, please reach out to our schools or Central Office. Tickets are available. And lastly, I encourage you to visit our social websites. See the information that's out there. We have been putting up our district calendars, featuring students from athletics to academic, social events. We had our cheerleaders just win third place at the Nationals. We had two out of three students in the spelling bee make it to the regional level. We had our students down all over our city today. The events that are going on and on all the time, we're really proud. So we want to keep making sure we move forward. And the best news of all, spring vacation is coming up shortly. So remember, April 16th, we get a break. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. And I'm presuming we don't have any student reports tonight?
We don't.
So we're gonna move right on to our presentations. We appreciate Johnny Appleseed hosting us. And why don't you come forward?
Well, welcome to Johnny Appleseed. How's this sound? Good, okay? So we are thrilled to have you here. You are going to listen to some students talk about growth mindset. I would just like to say that we are ready for MCAS. And tomorrow, they're gonna roll up their sleeves and do their work. We are thrilled to have Mrs. Deacon here. She has been brought new energy to all of us at the school leadership team and to the staff here. So I'm gonna get in trouble for this picture. My husband doesn't know that I have it here. This is Johnny Appleseed in 1965. I'm not gonna point him out. This, as you can see, is a large class. And when my husband was here in 5th grade, they didn't have the MCAS. They didn't have the rigorous standards. Certainly, they got a good education for their time. But I will tell you, the most challenging and what I asked you to be mindful of this year, the most challenging aspect that we have had this year is large classes. This is Ms. Elizabeth Marshall's class. And you know, when my husband went home, his mother was there full-time. She gave him a snack. It was the era, right? It was, they worked hard, but they didn't have the challenges that many of our students have. Mrs. Tapley's, whose students are going to talk tonight, will tell you that the challenges that we face make it really unmanageable to have this logical class. We've had that this year, 29 and 30 in our 4th grade. And I can tell you, we have to keep our core strong. We have to keep our classrooms at a manageable level. It may have been manageable. I haven't talked to Ms. Marshall, and I don't know how manageable she thought it was at that point. But the dynamics have changed, the family dynamics, the standards, the challenges. And so I would ask that you keep that mindful as we move into next year. So I am very pleased. These students come every day to learn, to think, to create, to share. And tonight, they're going to share with you.
Good evening. I am Bevan Tapley, and I'm a 4th grade teacher. My colleague Andrea Nevar is here as well, but I am running the show a little bit tonight by myself. The two of us work very hard, and we do this in our morning meeting routine with the concept of growth mindset. We've been doing this for two years. On a pretty much weekly basis, we talk about growth mindset. The idea was presented to us from our administrators a couple of years ago. And 5th grade actually took on this initiative to get growth mindset into the classroom and really work with students on developing a strong growth mindset. We are in a time when testing and high-stakes learning is going on and rigorous learning. And oftentimes, we see kids who crumble at the thought of having to persevere. Or they just give up when situations are challenging. So we have really done a lot of research on Carol Dweck, who is a psychologist out of Stanford University. And she has studied students over years and the idea of mindset. When she was given young children problems to solve, what she was really looking for is how they handled failure. And we have noticed a huge change in students who are taking on failure as a learning opportunity. And I can honestly say, when you have close to 30 students in your class, it is so rewarding to see the kids not give up so easily, to look to each other for help in persevering through difficult tasks. And oftentimes, there's 30 students and it's us. And we can't have 30 students coming up all the time saying, "I just don't get this." So they have really, really focused hard on having a healthy growth mindset. And I say the word "growth mindset" probably 10 times a day. And not for them to use it, but I'll say things like, "Wow, I am so proud that I see you really using your growth mindset. This is an excellent example." And I'm seeing it more and more. And it's becoming quite frequent in our classroom. It's a wonderful concept and something that we're going to continue to teach and foster in our classes. I don't want to say too much more because the kids actually put together this presentation for you all by themselves. They stayed with me after school, and I chose them because they have wonderful growth mindsets. I said, "I'm looking for students who use and apply their growth mindset on a daily basis." So these are the students who are helping me this evening. So I'd like to introduce students from my homeroom and to Mrs. Nevar's homeroom. We are Team 4A and 4B. Come on up. You're like, "I don't know what to do." Come on up. So I'm gonna start off the presentation with a real short video. It's one minute. The lessons of growth mindset are really all around us. Pixar and Disney do a wonderful job of putting these into movies, but they don't call it growth mindset. So I've said to the kids, "You've actually seen these things many times." One great example that I don't have in video tonight is just Dory when she says, "Just keep swimming." There's a lot of times in class where things are difficult, and I feel like saying, "Just keep swimming. We're going to get there." So it's a short clip that will come up, and then the students are going to get into their slides.
What is a fixed mindset? What is a growth mindset? Fixed mindset. Fixed mindset is when you are very positive and don't believe in yourself. When you have a fixed mindset, you won't get very far and oftentimes don't succeed. Growth mindset. A growth mindset is when people never give up on themselves or something that they are doing. You need to have a growth mindset when you are trying to achieve something that may be challenging. If you don't have a good growth mindset, then you will oftentimes give up too easy. A person with a fixed mindset would say something like, "I can't do this. I will never be able to do it," or "This is so hard." A person with a growth mindset would say something like, "I can do this. I will never give up, and I can't do this yet."
Training your brain. Your brain is a muscle. Like a muscle, your brain needs to work out. Not really lift weights, but learn and problem solve. If we think about lifting weights, the heavy weight is a rigorous challenge.
But the lightweight is more like the easy problem. So when you lift a heavy weight, you get stronger. Same with your brain. If you challenge yourself, you get smarter.
When do we use growth mindset? We use growth mindset in sports and school and in life. If you play a sport and you lose a point or you lose a game, you should have a growth mindset.
A growth mindset will make you want to practice more until you feel successful.
When in school, if you don't understand something, you should at least try, not cry.
I cannot understand poetry, and I need a growth mindset.
Understanding things that are difficult is like touching the clouds.
Life is like a book.
And you should have a growth mindset all the time.
So things to remember as we learn rigorous things.
There's a difference between not knowing and not knowing yet. Believe you can, and you're halfway there. The best teacher failure is.
Anything is possible if you believe it's possible.
It doesn't matter how slowly you go, as long as you do not stop.
And more recently, we got it. I think anything is possible if you have the mindset and the will and desire to do it and put the time in.
How will growth mindset help me in the future? Growth mindset will help me in the future by letting me remember to never give up and learn from my mistakes and persevere in my dreams. I will use growth mindset when I have a challenging problem. Here are some other ways we will use growth mindset in the future.
Math problems like 36 plus 764, or learning AP Calculus, or things like software, like learning how to use CADG code, which is a 3D printer file.
Or opening the Starburst without the wrapper stigma to the Starburst. Sounds silly, but it's easier to give it to my mother than try it myself.
Or like learning how to drive a car or learning how to fly planes.
P.S. The Starburst thing is not a joke. I am 100% serious. It is a nightmare turn rapid for me.
With growth mindset, anything is possible.
Starburst challenge. Can you unwrap it all in one piece?
Thank you for hearing our presentation. And we will give you a Starburst to try for yourself. Thank you.
Again, thank you. And our motto here is, "We can't do it yet."
Good job. Great. Very nice job. Great presentation. Okay, we're gonna move on to the HR report superintendent.
Yes. Should I mind you?
Hi, everybody. I'm Jen. I'm just here to... Can you hear me?
So you're not scratched.
Okay, that's better. Thank you. All right, so in your packets, there are a couple HR pieces. I'm just going to briefly touch upon them. The first one is the monthly personnel report that we said that we would have. And so just wanted to let you know that there are 10 new folks that we've hired. Doesn't look, it's not new positions per se. There's actually just one, two new positions out of the 10. The other eight are replacements because of resignations and folks moving to different schools. Any questions about that? Okay. And then the next piece, it's based upon a request from a prior school committee meeting that this sheet is in response to the pension application list. So what we are looking to do, based upon the superintendent, is to make fiscally responsible decisions. So ultimately, we did not hire 74 new positions. Most of them were replacing current positions. We do appreciate that this was brought to our retention. And in light of the superintendent's mission of transparency, we look forward to continuing to maintain open communication with City Hall and school committee. And if anyone has any further questions about this, please feel free to reach out to us. We are available. Does anybody have any questions?
So I guess the question originally that started this was, so how many positions did we have last year at this time? And then how many do we have now? Because we're trying to arrive at the number that of total positions that were reduced. So we found out last meeting, two weeks ago, that 17 teachers. But on the paraprofessionals or anybody else not covered under the union at a popular pension system, what was the void?
So I think the one of the pieces that I think is getting maybe mixed up is that they're not new people. Well, there are new people, but they're not new positions. So they're replacing somebody that either moved on to a teacher or a tutor position. So the way that it looks, it looks like it's more than it actually is. So we can, I can certainly get the numbers for you. Your actual question is to know how many people were here last...
Positions, not people.
The positions.
Right.
Okay.
Because I think the retirement office is listing, what'd I say? 80 new positions or whatever?
Just 70.
New people who are now on the system.
And on the list that was given to us, it was 74. 74 people. And then after going through them, and you can see here with the color coding here, that most of them, let's see, the eight are now inactive. 16 are new hires replacing employees. Six are active employees moving to a new open position. 10 are new hires and replace someone making a position change. Nine are employees who are already employed part-time and went full-time. And one is a newly created position, so...
And then you also had three double duplicates and 21 double custodians.
Correct. And this was not including the custodian cases.
So that's only 15 and a half new positions. So there are 15 and a half new positions. Maybe you want to hit the original question. The original question was, and I, and do the same thing. Any member can do this. Ask anybody and stop them and say, "How many positions were eliminated from the Leinster Public Schools system?" You'll get, if you ask 20 people, you get 20 different answers. Some think it's 100, some 150, some think it's 50. Nobody, no one person has the same amount. So I asked the question, so let's do a snapshot, right? Let's look at last year at this time, then put a layover and say, "How many positions are there?" And I think last time, what was recorded in was there were 17 teachers. That would be people that are members of the teachers' union over the retirement system. So then, our retirement office said there were 20-something custodians that were brought back, or 18. And then there were 70-something positions. New people added to the retirement system. So they couldn't, if you're on the retirement system, you can't leave the retirement... You can change positions, but you can't leave the retirement system and then come back to it when you get a new position. You just move over. So they recorded close to 90 people who were back on the retirement system. So that would mean there were 17 teachers laid off, total positions. And then 90 new people, and 24 of those were custodians. So what we have to figure out is, if you're saying that we, all we did is move people, then that can't be the case because they're already part of the retirement system.
But I think that depends on how the folks in the retirement within the City Hall are looking at that. So even just today, for example, there is somebody that was a parent, started as a paraprofessional, moved to a tutor. So she was still within the retirement, you know, the retirement list. She then went to a long-term sub. So this is within the same fiscal year. For three to four months, her money stayed where it was. And when she came back to being a tutor, we're now having to re... She's now a new member. She's looked as a new member based upon what the retirement place... But that's not how it's always been. And so I'm not sure if that's where I've been wondering if there's some confusion as to how...
I thought you were gonna meet with them. I thought they were gonna meet with you.
Yes, we've reached out. Yep, we're gonna, we are going to meet with them, absolutely.
So this is really simple. Last year versus this year, what is the difference in total employment in the school department? So we know it's 17 teachers, but what about all the people that are not covered under that union? How many, are there more people this year than last year? Or less people? And if there are, how many? That's the simple question.
So to put this simply, our current budget for FY18 for wages and salaries is $2.2 million less than it was for FY17. We cannot possibly have more people than we had. We're spending $2.2 million less after raises.
I don't want to tell you. I'm only telling you that there are 90 new people in the retirement system.
I think it's actually explained here. We do not have 90 new people with our retirement system. We have 90 people of, I mean, it's about 15 here are actually new.
So I don't want to argue with anybody. All I want is a snapshot of last year. How many people work for the Leinster Public Schools systems, right? And how many work for them now? That's it.
Sure.
That's easy, right?
Kids on there, yep.
Tracy, layover, right? Took last year, slide this year over it. We'll know exactly how many teachers, how many principals, how many everybody, right? School by school, we'll know exactly. Population of every school in terms of employment, who they are, and then if they're... are vacancies, I'd like to know what those are, right? What's the difference? And where are they? That's all.
So I think we could... And that's something separate than what is being captured on the retirement list because that's sort of some people are moving target on that list. You know, so you were asking about the retirement, now you're asking sort of a different question to that.
No, I asked two questions. One was the retirement. How do we have 90 new people?
Right.
24 were custodians. We don't know yet. They haven't met with the... They haven't met with the retirement system yet.
But they... The retirement system gave them the list.
Right.
And so they got through the list.
Right. But the retirement system hasn't. They're gonna meet with them.
It has given them the list.
They've given them the list.
That's what's in our package.
And this is...
No, no, no.
This is the 74 positions.
No, they were gonna meet with them to reconcile these two.
But they sent...
I know they sent it. But the retirement system has different numbers. I'm just telling you, the retirement system has to be correct. And that's why they need to meet with them. If it's not incorrect, then we have people listed here that we shouldn't. That's all. They need to reconcile this. That's all.
Well, that's the next step from this.
Yes. Yes. Is they will meet...
Find out where the issues are, so now it has to be figured out.
Yes. They'll meet with the retirement board and they'll reconcile that. And then we'll end up with two groups meeting, saying, "Yes, we agree on those," and we'll know.
Okay.
I need to do this... Understand something. I need to do this with every department, not just the school department. Every single department goes through the same process. I have to know how many people are working here, how many did last year, and if what... So the retirement system comes and says, "Listen, this is a red flag. You have 90 new people listed here." I need to understand that and break it down so that I get it. I can't just say, "Well, we have 2 million less last year." That doesn't cover it. That's all. Let's just reconcile that.
Right.
Because the audit's gonna ask us that question. That's all.
And I think we get that, and we're trying to find that information for you.
But the second... The second question is, you want a list... Let me understand it clearly. You want a list of everyone that works in the school department by category, you know, paraprofessionals, tutors, secretaries, teachers, custodians. You want a list of everybody by category, by school.
If that makes it easier, that's fine. If that's fine. If it's too much work, I believe that way.
Last year, this year.
Yes.
And where any openings may still occur.
No, I think just... Just a comparison. Where were we last year? Where were we this year? In terms of how many people are employed in the public school system?
I thought you said that you wanted...
How many this year? Well, you can break them down by school, because that's helpful to everybody else, but that's not necessary.
No, I thought you said that.
He said he wanted to know how many are vacant.
It would be...
And then any vacant positions. You want a list of vacant...
I don't know how much... Let me try one more time. When I look at each department, I look at the police department. I'm gonna know how many... I know the chief. I mean, I'm gonna know lieutenants, chief, sergeants, patrol detectives. Last year versus this year, two years, three years, four years, five years ago, and I can compare that.
But you don't necessarily know broken down by school.
If... If... If it's easier that way, that's fine. But I need it... I need to know from last year to this year, total. So if there are 17 teachers... There's a difference of 17 teachers, then we know what that is. That's fine. We can drill down further.
Just want to know which ones are...
Yes.
May I interject?
Custodians, whoever.
So the... So at the last meeting, we gave you a breakdown. We did teachers, tutors, paras, UNIV. Is that the four categories?
Yes.
And we gave you 16, 17, and 18. And then we gave you two dates for 18. We gave you October 1 and March 1.
And March 1.
Do you want us to go further with secretaries and custodians? Because I think those are the only ones we haven't covered.
Dave, how many... What's the difference between last year's staffing level at CTEI and this year? Okay. That's it. That's it.
Wasn't in the packet last week?
That's it, was.
I doubt it. Those numbers are in the packet from last week.
Okay. All right. Listen, Wendy, let me explain this to you. The auditors are gonna look for this information, okay? And if we don't get it, then nothing moves.
Right. But I still have a feeling we gave it to everybody.
You didn't.
So we'll take a look at it to make sure that we can...
Let me explain this, okay? Officially, as the mayor, not a school committee man. This is the information I need. Last year versus this year. That's it.
Yeah.
Who's employed last year and this year.
And I think it should be easy to do because we already compiled that.
That's it.
Yes.
It should be real easy.
It was in last... It was in our packet. What is different between what we had two weeks ago and what you're asking?
We had 17... We found out there were 17 less teachers than last year.
Yes.
And we still have... We do not have it reconciled in terms of the other employees covered under the city's pension system.
So that's still two different questions.
No.
So, yeah. Because we're gonna... We're in the process of...
That's a separation. That's gonna be reconciled.
Right. And so we're in the process of doing that. And we've already given the list, but we can re-get the list to make sure we're including the custodians in the system.
All right. Let me just ask you this. How many less people work in the Public School System right now versus last year?
I don't have that information.
There you go. That's it. That's it. That's all we're trying to get to. We should know.
I guess...
Okay.
I guess what's frustrating is, it seems like the past few weeks, every week we come, every meeting we come, and there's a different set of things that you want. You explain it differently. You might be asking the same thing, but you're explaining it differently. And that's where we're getting somewhat confused in what you exactly want.
I think I explained it last time. And I just explained it. No matter who you ask, everybody has a different number on how many people less we have in the Public School System, right? So we have a list that says there are 90 new people, minus 24 custodians, who have now entered the retirement system that were not in the retirement system before.
So it's gonna be reconciled because we didn't have information.
And the school department says, "No, that's not the case." That needs to be reconciled. In terms of staffing levels, separate issue, staffing levels, snapshot of last year, March, April, whatever month you want to use, in comparison to this year. What do we get from there? How many people less? How many fewer people work in the Public School System?
That we got two weeks ago.
Yeah. It's right here in the packet.
And the answer is what?
Seventeen. Okay, so I have the packet ready.
It's 17 teachers. That's what we know.
Okay.
And paras and... We gotta break down.
It doesn't. It doesn't break it down. It doesn't.
What is it they... What is it they...
It doesn't. We have 90 new people listed in the system.
Now, see, now you're back in retirement.
We have 90 new people listed in the system.
But you're back. That's the retirement board.
I'm just telling you, there can't be 90 new people in the system.
There aren't 90 new people.
Okay. And that's what we need to fix.
There's not a difference between...
Right. So that's them reconciling.
So, according to that...
It's breaking.
According to that, there are more people working in the Public School System than there were last year.
So, we're gonna move on because the... It's gonna be reconciled with the retirement board. We've gotten the list. You've figured out what, on our end, what we think is going on and where the mistakes or confusion might be. You're gonna meet with them, and then it'll be reconciled. And so, and we have...
To the chair.
Then hold on a minute. Then we have the numbers from last week. You're gonna add in the secretaries and the custodians because they're missing. And so, once that's reconciled, then we'll be able to see from the other.
Yes, absolutely.
But we can't do that until that's done.
Yes.
Okay? So we're gonna move on and...
I'm a little confused on this. The retirement board doesn't work... It's not part of the Public School District, is it?
No.
Okay. Who they... Who are they part of?
The employees that are not covered under the mass teachers.
Oh, my God. I'm asking.
I'm going to...
Is the retirement board part of the School District?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
They are?
The employees that are not covered under the mass teachers.
Well, the retirement board, how they're part of the School District.
They don't work for our district.
Okay. Who do they work for?
The retirement board.
Who do they work for?
The retirement board is an agency in and of itself.
Okay. But they're not part of the School District? Am I... Are they?
The employees are.
The retirement board, they're not part of the School District. All these questions should be asked at the retirement board, not the School District.
Right. So, Ron, that's gonna happen when they...
But it's not their fault, and it's not the district's fault.
Yeah. Nobody's saying it is. They're gonna reconcile it.
He's playing it out that way. That's what's...
I did say that.
Okay. So, you know what? We're gonna move on.
You wanna play the tape?
Ron, we're gonna move on because we have a plan to get it fixed, okay? And then we'll all have the same information and be able to... So with this...
Y'all want to hear the ears?
I would just like to ask, is there anything else besides these two things that you're asking?
All right. So let's move on. So the next piece is the graduation and dropout rate.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to have a few moments of your time. We're hopefully giving some great news about some of the good things going on at LHS and CTEI. David Iger and Tag Team this presentation on the dropout rates and graduation. So you can jump to the next slide. The thing that we did is we decided to go back and look a few years to see if there are any trends that you could help... Well, that you would be able to recognize and then to see some of the thinking that's been going on for the last few years to support these students that are in these groups. The dropout rates from a few years ago are up top, and you can see that top number says number 12. And the reason I highlighted those as red is you can see all of the students that are dropouts in all grades are in the high-needs category. They're either economically disadvantaged students, or they're English-language learners, or they're students with disabilities. So they're all in this really tough subgroup of kids that really need some extra support. David, we go on to the next slide. In this year, 2015-16, both LHS and CTEI were together. They're reported as a single number for this one year only. The number for both schools at that time was 15. But again, you can see the same trend. There are 10 high-need students, five of which are economically disadvantaged, three are LEP, and three are students with disabilities. Let's go on to the next one. This is last year's data. This is something we're really proud of. We put in a different kind of ninth-grade teaming system, which I'll explain in just a minute, that has led to a 0% dropout rate for all the ninth graders. So we haven't lost any ninth graders last year. So the current 10th-grade class, all of them were here as ninth graders, and they all were enrolled together. But you see the same trend in the total dropouts. There's 12 total, and they're all high-need students from last year.
So, a question. So what happened to the CTEI students?
David's gonna show you his. He's separated them out. He'll go through those in just a minute.
You don't have that.
Uh, yep. They're in there. There are three slides for LHS and three... Actually, there's only one.
No, they're not.
I've got graduation, and I've got dropout rates, and they're just... There's just a list.
David has them all. We will show them. We will show them.
With the exception of the 2015, 2016, yes.
Yeah. We'll show them to you. David has them all. So this is the LHS dropout rates. What's that?
Can you also email them to us?
Oh, sure. We can send you this after we're done. Now, let's go to the next slide. Here are the graduation rates. And again, graduation... This is the four-year graduation rate. There's also a five-year, but we thought before you'd be most relevant. 312 students came in as freshmen, and when they graduated in 2015, 89% up at the top of that second column was the graduation rate for the four-year graduation rate. But again, you can see the low graduation rates are in the ELL category, students with disabilities, low-income, and high-need students. Again, these are the at-risk students in the population. Let's go to the next year.
A question. Because you're talking about 312 students come in.
As freshmen.
As freshmen. But people move to other communities. They don't necessarily drop out.
No. They don't count against us.
They transfer, so we're taking those into consideration.
Absolutely, yep. I think the transit rate is somewhere around 20%. It's different in different groups. So what happens is, as soon as October 1st hits on the freshman year of any student, boom, every kid gets a mark. And that student's student assassin number is followed all the way through to when they graduate, other than their fourth year. And some kids, like particularly ESL students, take their fifth year to graduate. So if you go online, you'll see our graduation rates. You'll see they're reported as four-year and five-year graduation rates. And they're totaled together. We have some students that have walked across the stage this year that took five years to graduate. Those still count toward our graduation rate. The trend I want you to notice are the high-risk students. They're the ones that have the low graduation rates. They did a few years ago. David, we can keep up one more. This is from two years ago. And again, graduation rate was around 90% at that time, a little bit better graduation rate, but 42% ELL, the 84 for the students with disabilities, again, low-income and high-needs. Those are the kids we really need to get our arms around because those are the ones that are at risk. So if we go to the next slide, these are the ones from last year. Again, right around 90% graduation rate, and those at-risk groups are the ones that are bringing the graduation down. So let's look and see what's been in place for the last few years. Again, you better feel for that. Let's go to the next slide, David. The ninth grade teams currently have a double common planning block. What that means is, in the past, we used to have one planning period together. And now we have 100 students with the ninth grade all together. And those 100 students are with four teachers. And those four teachers have two planning periods, often per day, to meet with each other, meet with parents, and talk about students and that's at-risk groups. Uh, there's very little chance to say cause and effect here, but that may have led to the 0% graduation rate for just all last year. Because the students that are currently 10th grade had that experience where the teachers could really get behind them and talk about them, sit together and meet on a regular basis, almost daily, to talk about those ninth graders. The English language learner team, we just established last year. And there are nine teachers in the English language learner team. They too also have common planning time. And they can have the same kind of intervention experience with the students that the ninth grade teams have, but these are the English language learners. We did the same thing with the ninth and 10th grade resource teams. There are four teachers that are teaching the resource students. These are the smaller classes, students with IEPs. And there's four teachers on the 10th grade. They also have common planning time. They can also make appearances. These things haven't been in place before. And now all of these opportunities to support students during the school day have been established and they've been using those pretty well. Very curious to see what the rates show up for next year. The biggest help has been the Academic Learning Center. There were always ninth and 10th grade tutorials and 11th and 12th grade tutorials. These are students that are just with IEPs. They have one block a day in the Academic Learning Center. But this has been expanded a little bit to a 9-10 inclusion, which has regular ed students and special needs students. This is an opportunity during the school day where any kid at risk can be scheduled into a support system of some sort to help them get to be more successful. So those are the ways that we're dealing with the at-risk populations in the dropout rates and graduations rates. There's currently about 700 students that are in high risk right now at LHS and CTEI. About 200, 250 are high risk. And we are going to be building next year's master schedule with some of these things in mind so we can be sure to get our arms around the kids that are at high risk for the future. Any questions? David, you're on.
Does anybody have any questions for?
Chris, what positions do you have that are different last year than this year in your school quality, have you had?
Three guidance councils. We just got one back.
So two?
Three deans, three math teachers, an English, a science, a social studies, a world language. I'm missing one. There was 15 positions that we lost.
And how many new positions?
Uh, we got one guidance counselor back about a month ago.
Okay.
So it's not related to position, it's just, I think.
No, no, yep.
That's just teachers, right? One county secretary, whatever.
Good evening, everyone. So we basically have the same slide here that Chris showed as his last slide. And the reason for that is that in all of these cases, there's really a mixture between high school students and CTEI students. For example, where it says ninth grade teaming with double block common planning time. For CTEI, we have our own ninth grade team. And we have that double block common planning time. Uh, English language learner team, many of our students that are in CTEI that are bilingual, they have to go to that, they have to take classes with those English, other English language learners in the high school. So they share the classroom together. And the ninth and 10th grade resource teams, I think we have about four resource teachers for CTEI students. And they team up with the resource teachers from the high school students. And when we build those classes, they're not pure. They, in those resource classes, which maybe have 10 students max, you will have some CTEI students and some LHS students. So the Academic Learning Center is available to any student, grades nine through 12, that need it. And then at the very bottom, you know, I forgot this, but there's one, there's one less person I have too, now that you mention it, because we used to have two tutors and we lost our two tutors and we're able to hire a CTEI bilingual tutor this year to replace the two positions with one. So that bilingual tutor is very important to us because we're getting more and more bilingual students in CTEI. And we hate to pull them out of shop to get language training. So what we do is we try to use a CTEI bilingual tutor to help them out. And that's been pretty successful. Now, don't show any other material I have on my laptop, not Chris. Okay, yep. Okay, so back in 2014, 2015, we were successfully reporting as two separate schools. And that particular year, you can see that our numbers were kind of high. We had 751 students enrolled in CTEI. We had one dropout. Kind of a, I don't know, that doesn't happen all the time. That was a, that was a pretty good year. And it resulted in one tenth of a percent as a dropout rate. So that was pretty good. You can go to the next one, Chris. So then when we hit 2015, 2016, when the scheduling was put into X2, something happened so that everything went under one number, one school number. See the way it is? We have two school numbers. In this particular year, it was reported as one school number. And I believe Chris showed you this slide also. It's, it was, it's the same dropout rate for both the high school and CTEI because we weren't, we weren't separated. You can go to the next one. So when we get to 2016, 2017, we wanted to make sure that we were separated. So once again, we were separated. And we had 695 students at this time. And we had six, they were called dropouts, but I have to tell you, they're not really dropouts because we've been following those students. Some of them have gone to job corps and a couple of them have gotten their GEDs. But what happens is, by the time they get that accomplished, they've already been reported. And so we end up with these numbers, which is still not bad, but not totally accurate. So this one here, if I would have had false teeth, they would have fallen out when this came through right here. Because you never get 100% graduation rate, but somehow it happened that year. We just, we, that was in 2014, 2015. All of our students that started in four years earlier than that, so that would have been 2011, and when they hit 2015, they graduated. That was pretty good. Now, our last graduation rate went down a little bit. I did these numbers and we had 117 students and eight of them did not graduate in four year allotted time. So our graduation rate dropped from 100% to 93.2%. And I just want to tell you a little bit about what I have learned. The life skilled kids, they count, they go onto CTEI. And oftentimes, like, we have students in our shops right now that have been there more than four years and they're not graduating because they're going to stay till they're 22 years old. And so that affects the numbers in an adverse way, but we're taking more of them in as we can do it because we just want to service those kids. Okay. That's it?
Do you have any questions? Can you send us your slides?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Ron?
You know, you were saying that the one, that list you had, those that, you know, they were considered, they had, they had dropped off, and you said they didn't because they were, in the end, they were able to, they got their GEDs or they were a job corps. Do they have, do you have an asterisk next to that? That's not where you can, they can tell that it's not really what it is, that they didn't succeed in the end?
The thing is, I think we know.
Yeah.
The way that, that's what's publicized on the state. Anybody can go and look at our data online and that's what they see.
There's no asterisk state.
The company that says that, no, no.
Because it's a snapshot in time where you don't go back and fix it or update it.
So there's no updating? You mean one day, like you said, they, when you go back and you say that they got their job before, they get their GED or whatever? There's no capability to edit them? Are you able to edit that?
No, no. The report has the history of timeframes and you have an opportunity to correct it for your error. We go after some students. In my previous school, we had, graduation rates were initially in my previous school. And they had reported maybe 100, 150 students that had actually gone to other countries. And many other countries don't ask for transcripts, so we don't know. We ended up having to go on Facebook and on MySpace and try to find some of these kids. It probably happened to them. I mean, sometimes, some of the, some of the numbers you see up there, just, I mean, you send three letters, certified mails, and the last address, and they do come back to us, where did you go? We don't know where they went. And then nobody ever follows up and asks us for the next school. In our previous school, we ended up finding kids that had actually graduated in South Dakota, Puerto Rico, South Carolina. And they, they were on our dropout list. And they never told us. So I mean, we ought to be a little bit skeptical of some of the stuff. But we consider the good idea of trends. And that's what we're trying to show you tonight. There's some trends in here that you can see, that there's some at-risk groups here that we're trying to get our arms around and support. And that's the point. That's why you do it for state.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Amens? Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to the nursing report.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for having me. So I'm Kathy Goddard, for those of you who don't know me. And this is the Central School Health Services, Lemnster Public School Services Nursing Report for last year with a little bit of information from this year. So our goals are to promote a safe and healthy school environment in order to promote educational success for all students. Students, you know, by meeting their health needs at school, they can stay in school and it reduces absenteeism. So one of our, our big things is, our grant is through the Department of Public Health. And the Massachusetts Department of Public Health recommends one FTE for every school with 250 to 500 students. And last year, I had to do the Med Delegation Report. Every two years, we have to do that. And they have me list the schools within the populations and the number of nurses. And we are below that. And I know here we are cutting, talking cuts and I'm begging for three more nurses. So anyhow, based on population, I really should have three plus nurses at the high school. Uh, we have two now, one of which has been out ill long term and we've been filling it with subs. When we go to student safety, we really need consistency in student care. Most of our schools are more than 500 students. So, can you keep going? That's okay. So, but other benefits are, you know, shared workload, less burnout. I had to sub here Johnny Appleseed. And I have to say, Nurse Jen is a saint. I was seeing between 80 and 91 kids a day. And, you know, it was, it's extremely challenging. Um, on top of which, I have a sub nurse list of 21, but I can never find anyone to work. So it's, it's extremely challenging this year. On top of which, I have two nurses that plan on retiring in about two years. So I would like to get some new blood in to really help keep us strong. Okay, so our nursing visits, as you can, I have the statistics for last year in regards to our illnesses, injuries, medications, management, other health needs, and the total visits. And then right beside that, unduplicated students. That's the number of students that keep coming again and again and again for all those visits that you see to the left. So, um, for the illness comparison, I decided to break it down by grades. And my exact numbers here. It was really quite astounding that most of our illnesses, the students are seen more in kindergarten to grade five. It makes sense. They have a bellyache, they don't really know what's going on. They just hurt, they don't feel good, they want to go home. And by the time they're in sixth grade and middle school, they kind of sort of know what's going on and like, okay, I already ate something and I went to the bathroom. And then by high school, they really understand how to take care of themselves and they really need minimal intervention from the nurse. They still need the nurse, but their illnesses are a little bit different. And they've already practiced some self-care from what they've learned in the prior years. Uh, for injuries, once again, kindergarten to grade five, elementary, they are the worst when it comes to injuries. We have 12,021 injuries in elementary, 3,763 in middle school, and 1,376 in high school. So it's, I blend recess, but I love recess, so I'm not asking to take it away. I want more, but it does cause injuries. And then for the visits in total, kindergarten to fifth, 19,166. Middle school, 11,192. And high school, 9,810. Now, I think that all of this, you know, really shows that, you know, the children are improving in their health literacy and their self-management skills, as well as health prevention as they age. Behavioral health interventions. Now, it looks like there's less nursing visits are behavioral. And I put it in because it was controversial. However, the Department of Public Health changed their questions and they merged questions. So I, it's not really less. We're, we're really quantitatively seeing more mental health. It's just that the DPH recording has changed. So our health office visits, 5,251 students were seen by a school nurse one or more times during the school year, which is 84.7% of our population. And this is not counting your screenings. This is people coming in to see the nurse for anything within the school year. 92.7% are returned to class. That is our goal, is really to treat them and get them back to class as soon as possible so they have more time on learning. 5.7% are dismissed for illness and 0.2% are dismissed due to injury. So these are the major health conditions. 941 students have asthma. Only 255 of those, about, you know, a little less than a third, have orders for an inhaler. 544 students have allergies that we know of. And only 181 out of those have orders for the EpiPens. And I'm going to add in regards to EpiPens, most kids have their first allergic reaction while they're in school because they're around new things that they've never tried before. So we do carry some stock EpiPens for those emergencies. 23 students have type 1 diabetes and four students in the district had type 2 diabetes. That was something that used to be unheard of. They used to be a middle-aged disease and now we are seeing students with it. And 36 students have seizure disorders, 50 with cardiac decision, conditions, 18 with celiac. And I'm going to add nine with cancer. And that's just the major ones. And then for our other conditions, our number one is ADHD. 657 students are diagnosed that the nursing office has on file. 326 diagnosed with anxiety. 183 with autism spectrum disorder. 239 depression. 105 with a known trauma history. And 141 with other mental health behavioral conditions. And in the nursing office, you know, many times, these are frequent flyers. Many times, these people take more time and effort to care for and to try to figure out what's going on. Health screenings were state mandated. So we have our, our vision, hearing, postural screenings, as well as those are referred. Vision referrals have been increasing every single year. We had 842 students that we had to send out referrals on. It's astounding. I think it's too much screen time and little phones. A new screening that we had was, is ESPOR. We started that last year in the middle school, grade eight. We did all eighth graders. We got 396 screened and only seven were referred. And that was in-house referrals. And it really was, was mild. It was, it went very smoothly. The kids left with a smile on their face and they were thanking us. And for those that don't know what ESPOR is, it stands for Screen, Brief Intervention, and Referral to Treatment. We asked four questions. Question number one, how many times in the past year have you had something with alcohol in it to drink? How many times in the past year have you smoked marijuana or other marijuana products? How many times in the past year have you done something to get high? How many times in the past year have you used prescription drugs in a way that they were not supposed to be used? Such as using more than you were supposed to, using it when you didn't need it, or using somebody else's prescription? And then there's a bonus question. How many times have you gotten into a car with someone who is under the influence? And it was the car question that most kids answered out of those seven. Flu vaccines. We've been doing clinics every year for a while now. And we had 10 clinics last year and it was open to all school and city employees. And actually, this is this year. And 259 participated. So it's still a success and we'd like to continue that to try to reduce employee illness. So successes that we've had. Dental program, we have extended it into the high school. So this is really great because, you know, the kids are looking at getting into jobs and dental health is, is important in regards to job placement as well as overall health. Uh, the pre-prom letters that went last year to junior and senior parents, where the parents had to sign the letters. And I think I put a copy in your packet so that you have an example. So, and that went into the, the alcohol and that it's illegal and, you know, to please as parents to, that they make the most positive influence in their kids' lives. Uh, let's see, CPR, first aid. We've been offering it every month, twice a month for staff and students, plus more as, as requested. And our quarterly health newsletter, which I will, you also have a copy of, but I'll go into that later on. So our service grant through the Department of Public Health. We have, next year will be our last year for this grant extension. And then there's going to be a new grant coming out. And it's been great in regards to networking opportunities in data and statistics. Massachusetts leads the nation in regards to data and statistics. It has been helping us with our staffing. It pays for one FTE of nursing services. It also pays for the nurses to come in and do the health screenings for hearing, vision, BMI. And, let's see, it, it helps us with our education. It pays for SNAP, which is our computer system, our technology. And it helps us to, with greater grant opportunities. And there's community collaboration. We communicate, we collaborate with many, many different organizations. And then our health committee. So it's comprised by, by many of us that are in this room, actually, as well as community members. And we use that in regards to implementing the wellness policy and promoting health-related programs. We are currently reviewing and updating our wellness policy. It is due to be updated this year. It is due to be updated this year. And the quarterly newsletter falls under this as well. So, it's been a group process. Our different programs are nutrition, education, physical activity, allergy awareness, concussion policy adherence, health education. And I want to add, we lost two health teachers in middle school. So, what do you do? You want to continue the education, you want to continue the conversation. So, we came up with a newsletter. It is not a substitution for the teachers. We really do need health education in middle school. But we didn't want to go backwards too much. We wanted to try to continue at least addressing some of the topics so that the students, the parents, the staff can, could discuss them. We also work on professional development and school-based activities. And we want to increase people's understanding of health and wellness, from parents, staff, students, and try to maintain consistency. Going back to the ESPERT screening, I explained that already. We just finished the middle schools for this year. We are starting the high school. We hope to have it done by April vacation. And that's it. We're the Brisbane Health and Education. We want to just make sure everyone is healthy and safe and ready to learn. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
On your flu vaccine.
Yes.
Was that at every school?
So, it was at, not every school, but at many of the schools. So, Priest Street and Bennett are too small. So, we had it at Bennett, I believe, this year. And the Priest Street staff went over there and got their vaccines.
Was it at the high school?
Yes, it was. It's usually at the high school in the afternoon, from 2:30 to 4:30.
How were students notified?
It wasn't for students. It was for staff. It was for city employees.
My misunderstanding. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Very happy to have you here. All right. So, at this point, we're going to move to subcommittee reports. Policy, can you give it forward?
So, we didn't meet tonight. And I don't believe we are meeting this month. So, we have, and last meeting we voted on, but it wasn't a policy change, so we don't need a second meeting. So, nothing new for policy.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance has, I guess, a couple of things. We need to formalize something that's actually been decided on the floor, I believe. There are still, still money in the budget on the expense side for outsourcing custodial services. Need to transfer that out of where it is, because we're not outsourcing custodial services anymore, into the two categories to pay for junior custodians. So, we're requesting $423,892 to be transferred from 4110 custodial service expenses to 4110 custodial services salaries. That requires a full school committee vote because it's expenses to salaries. We're also, that's to pay the, that's to pay them. We also have to pay their health insurance benefits. So, $184,000 also from custodial services expenses to 5,200 insurance programs expenses. I think technically that doesn't require a full school committee vote, but it is a large amount. So, we want it to be, the subcommittee felt it would be good to have us all vote on that.
So, you're making a motion for both of those?
So, make a motion to transfer $607,892 from 4110 custodial service expenses, $423,892 to go into custodial services salaries, and $184,000 to go into 5,200 insurance programs expenses.
Do I have a second? Any questions, comments, discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
We should take them individually. Individually.
We could. We could do it separately.
So, what if we did this salary?
It's the health insurance.
So, it's all for custodial services.
It's all for custodial services. We have the salaries and salaries to pay them, some expenses to pay their health insurance.
All those in favor? opposed, motion carries. Anything else from the finance committee?
I don't know if this is specifically finance committee or not, but I brought up, two weeks ago, I suggested we have a public hearing for the budget on 4/23.
Right, we had to, I mean, for me, it was a little frustrating because we all sat around and looked at our calendars and voted on a date. And now that's been changed for a variety of reasons. So, I think in the future, we really need to stick with whatever we decide. But at this point, we are...
That is still an option for the committee. Changing it is not up to me and I never wanted to suggest it otherwise. I just, I felt I made a mistake in suggesting the 23rd because I failed to consider that that was a city council night. So, I wanted to bring up whether we could change that so that that would not happen. I think there are city councilors who would like to come to a public hearing.
So, there was a lot of sort of emails back and forth. And I think it sounded like, for the most part, folks were leaning towards having the public hearing be at our next regularly scheduled meeting, but it would be at 6 o'clock. So, from 6 to 7, we would have the public hearing on our budget. And we still also need to have the public hearing on school choice, which we'll talk about under New World Business at this point.
First, I still would like to see it earlier, even on the April, towards the end of April, whether you go back to the 20th period, maybe at 5:30 or the 30th?
So, the, right, so the 23rd, of course, was the issue with the city council.
If we have it at 5:30?
I don't know if they're available or not. Why do we have to meet the city councils that long? We're a independent group. We do not have to go before the city council. They are invited to go, the public is invited to go. And I understand, Mike, you went to the city council meeting, which personally I thought was inappropriate to speak about the budget hearing with the city council president. I, you know, we're a separate body. We, you know, it's whatever we want as a public hearing. We're not here to meet the schedule of the city council.
That's all true. It is also, as I understand it, the city council used, changed their meetings of the month years ago so that we would be meeting on different nights. But there's sort of, there's an old standing agreement.
I mean, I think that's for meetings in general, there's times that we have conflicts over the length of the years where we've had to, you know, double up or something comes up. I think, you know, we need to be dictating our own schedule.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, to Sue's point, no one in the school committee should be talking on behalf of the school, representing the school committee, sort of without having people's blessing to do so.
Point of order. Can we get back to scheduling the day? Otherwise, we drift off.
Sure.
I agree with everybody out of an issue, but we drifted away. That's it.
So, our option is to continue to do it on the 23rd. We had talked about doing it. I know somebody threw out the 30th at one point. And then our next scheduled meeting is maybe the 7th. Okay. We have assisted superintendent interviews on the 23rd that we purposely scheduled, so that's not an option at this point. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with 30th or the 7th. And what's the budget, what's your opinion, I guess? I mean, what do you look at for getting that budget from us?
You pretty much give it to me.
Right.
Right. So, we just need to fulfill our requirement to have the hearing.
All hearings.
I would lean towards the 7th so that we're not asking the public to come out an extra time since things are so, in such a better place paperwork-wise. And the work the finance subcommittee has been doing has been so thorough that it's not as messy and hard as last year. So, I think if we did it for an hour on the 7th, it would be immediate not to ask people to come out an extra night, including the public.
So, how does the 7th, so let's make a motion to formally formalize it.
So, I make a motion to have our public hearing on, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Monday, May 7th.
Awesome. Any thoughts or discussions? Can everybody make that?
And it would be starting at 6 o'clock. And so, at that meeting, we would not have a finance subcommittee meeting, the public hearing will be in the middle of that.
It's a regular school committee meeting. It's not going to be going.
Yes, but it's everybody coming at 6, instead of 7. And that meeting, we should have, I don't know where it's scheduled that day, but we should have that.
It's at ABC right now. That's it right now, it's at ABC.
Just want to make sure that that's where we are. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
Wards.
Michael?
Wards.
Make a motion for the following wards to be approved. Ward 35 for $2,666,633.13. Ward 36, $122,864.01. Ward 37, $2,442,668.94. Ward 38 for $279,429.50. And then from the grants and revolving funds, Ward 35 for $154,720.89. Ward 36 for $158,48.85. Ward 37 for $301,000. I'll start that again. Ward 37 for $301,586.3. And Ward 38 for $292,103.81.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We can move on to a few minutes. Wendy? Make a motion for a minute.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our March 19th, 2018 meeting.
That's the regular school committee meeting?
Yes, that's the school.
And finance, did you approve the minutes in your subcommittee?
Yes, we did.
And to approve the finance subcommittee meeting minutes from March 1st.
Wendy, do I have a second? Does anybody have any corrections, omissions?
I do.
Go ahead, Wendy.
In the March 19th minutes, in the subcommittee report, the motion for the extracurricular fees not be exempt except, it says music in band, it should say middle school music in band. Page three of the minutes. It says number three for the... It should say middle school music in band. That's it.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to any action items? Okay, awesome. We're going to move on to new and old business. So, the other thing that we do need to do, and we have to post for some days, is the school choice. And that is something that we do need to get out there because people are making plans for next year. So, at this point, since our next regularly scheduled meeting is on the 7th, I would want to address that issue first before we go into finance. Because it's important that we have a, be able to vote on that in our regular meeting. Because we need to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to make plans for their children. So, what that means is that we would be voting on whether we are accepting a school choice. Sometimes we vote at just a blanket yes. There's been some occasions where we've said only 1 through 12. It's always, because we've had such a large kindergarten incoming, so sometimes we have a lot of kids to come into kindergarten. But that might be something we want to vote enough this year, depending on, you know, sort of numbers. But the way it always works is we always have a caveat that it will not, it's where we have votes. And it will not bump any Leinster residents, students that obviously are first opportunity. But it also talks about kids coming from outside our district, but also kids who may be in Johnny Amosie District, but they're babysitters in Northwest and they're requesting to go to the west instead of Johnny Amosie. So, it's intra-school choice as well as...
Do we have a written policy for intra-school choice?
We do.
We should keep that available. There were many unhappy people last year who have their kids at different schools at different levels or for whatever reason, wanted to switch schools and were upset that they couldn't.
I think some of that had to do with the kindergarten issue.
We have the guidelines, the school choice guidelines for one, which we can get to. And the main thing there is space.
It's all about space.
Right, but I think we should make sure, anybody that applies, we should give them a copy of it, just so they can read it. Because they came into my office extremely, extremely upset, wanting me to bend the rules farm. And I tried to explain that I couldn't do that, that we had these in place. And then they applied to every student. So, I think, as long as we can handle the same document, we're 99% of the way there.
Good point. Thank you, Dean, because that makes perfect sense. Can we request some data on school choice, like maybe moments? We heard this school, what grade? Can we get any accurate numbers by grade and short building? Just so we can make informed decisions. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
Two things. One, this past week, I visited Johnny Amosie School and toured around to different classrooms. It was a wonderful time to see what kids are doing, particularly the kindergarten classroom, who have been working on animal habitats. And they were very proud to show, show me what they had made their dinam- dinamamas of their habitats. And it was good. And I thank Johnny Amosie for allowing me to come. And the other thing is, a request that came up this weekend. I had a parent contact me wondering about CTE's electrical shock. And I honestly didn't have an answer for it. I wondered, you know, where we're at with that position.
There's still advertising for it. David is still in search of somebody. It's been difficult trying to bring somebody in now. And having the uncertainty would that be able to create for next year? People have not wanted to jump on board. But he hasn't given up. He's posted it everywhere.
Two questions, one along the lines of that. So, hypothetically, if we don't fill that slot, is it possible that if we gave up that program, that those students would have to go to Monty Tech or something?
Yes.
And become school choice, right?
At chapter 7, you're level one.
Right. Okay, so that's...
So, we feel that we don't want to.
No, we don't.
We don't.
Okay, and the other thing I just wanted to mention was, several of us went to the LEF dinner and that was a very nice occasion. And, you know, I thank the LEF for sponsoring it. It really was a nice, it really was.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. The middle school had their Sound of Music performances. And they did this, it was amazing. See, it's not easy material. Some of it's emotional, especially in, you know, the time we're in. And they all did an amazing job. They ran fewer rehearsals than normal because of all of that awful, awful snow that we had. So, I just wanted to give Mrs. Lamey and all the middle school kids the recognition that they had done three amazing shows. And hopefully you all got to see it.
We have the Day of the Hill coming up. I know sometimes you go, Ron.
Yeah, I'm going.
I'm planning to. Is anybody else interested in going? I think we have a guy at home. So, if anybody else wants to...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, if anybody else is interested, please let Chris know. But at this point, Ron is going to be our representative there. So, we appreciate that. Anything else under new world business? Okay, at this point, and we will be...
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under the chapter 39 of the Massachusetts General Laws for discussion on contract negotiations. And we will be, we will call both.
Yes. Wendy?
Yay.
Yay, yay.
Yay.
Yay. Yay.
Yay.
Thank you. All right, back in session.
I'd like to make a motion to acquiesce a tenured contract subject to the...
to the, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said two.
I thought you said five.
Ten. Take a motion, we offer the superintendent a three-year contract, subject to negotiations between our attorney and whoever represents the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Yay.
I'd like to thank the Johnny Appleseed DTO, they give us these every year, I love them, five more years, I'll have a whole sack, so I can invite people over, in the meantime, thank you.
So, Paula, the other thing that was just sort of, it really wasn't a vote, but we wanted to break up, that we're starting a search for the principal at Leinster High School, and we'll be forming a interview committee, search committee, and so if anybody on the committee is interested, they should send Paula an email, and we will have, I know we've had a couple of people already in the community, some would have volunteered, and there'll be, have a national staff as well.
I look forward to it.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.